Hey Dean, we're all set.
John, ready?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. And I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under and out, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is properly oached in a normal oaching place. The next thing is someone to make a motion to approve the general.
I'll make a motion to approve the motion.
Second.
Fill me in the motion, Katie made the second. In the discussions, all favor let's say aye. Aye, aye. All at the same time, motions carried. That's a minute from December 14th, open session, December 14th closed session, and then another December 14th closed session.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14th, 15th open session, December 14th, 16th closed session, and December 14th, 17th closed session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any addition or correction? Then all favor approve the minutes as presented, say aye. Aye. All at the same time, motions carried. We're on to approval of financial report and bill listing. Sure, we'll take a motion for it.
I'll make a motion to approve our term listing general front payroll. Check number 553791, $165, check number 553792, the amount is $11. Credit card is 920053295, 920053407, the amount is $71,000, $10,000 expense. Credit card is number 920053407, 920053519, the amount is $31,000, $500,000 expense. Credit card is number 900053510, 920053614, the amount is $150,000, $500,000, $95. Wire transfer, wire number 20200155, 20200183, the amount is $9,000, $9,000, $80,000 expense. For total payroll, this person's total was $763,600, $740,000 expense. Accountable check number 54551 through 54579, the amount is $38,000, $80,000 expense. If you wire transfer 20200163 through 20200116, the amount is $5,951,000, $10,000 expense. Credit card transaction, 122020, the amount is $6,560, $6 cents. If the H card deposit number is 202100038, 021200045, the amount is $1,047,000, $10,000 expense. For total accounts payable, $251,794, $10,000 expense. The total is worth of $1,015,95,000.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion to, and a second to approve the bill listing. Are there any additional questions, Rachel or your military staff? Okay, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All at the same time, motions carried. We're on to delegations to be heard, and Andrew, where is that to speak for us?
Yeah, well Jay was disappointed last meeting that I didn't speak, so I didn't want to disappoint him again. So, here I am. General question for you, there's a board to address either this meeting, next meeting, or administration's meeting, next meeting. Around student achievement in the COVID world that we're in. Multiple question or multiple part question here. You know, have we in general, what have been the trend lines for our district? From the standpoint of this time last year, through virtual last year, summer slide into this year, have we seen dips? And I guess. Are we seeing improvements as this year has gone on, as we're back in school? How do our current scores compare to maybe a historical average? If there has been a slide, are we back at historical levels? And then just generally speaking, for those students that are doing virtual, are we seeing a slide in their scoring relative to kind of averages historically? I've read articles where schools are seeing that, I just wanted to know, our district is experiencing that as well. I think we're in the middle of testing right now, so maybe this is better addressed in a month. But more or less just wanted to get the feedback from the district as to how we're doing, what we experienced, and you know, where we stand.
Thank you. I thought you'd be able to touch on some of that information.
I can talk all information, correct? Yep, I certainly can.
And no one else has questions to speak to us, so we are on to.
Indeed, there has been no emails either.
Yeah, no emails, correct. Okay, we're on the district minutes period report, action, we have. No donations?
Yep, we got two donations. So we've got two step donations. Thank you Mary Iwansky for writing grants, so we got some typical PPG grants that you can get right around this time. The Blackwater Giving Foundation, we have $2,000 for the primary and $5,000 for community. We are going to funneling those into earning spaces for next year and buying equipment for all of that. Same way for the Milwaukee Society of Plastics, further $5,000 for the universal laser system. Yeah, another piece that we're going to continue to incorporate into our curriculum and some of the opportunities that we're excited about with our new remodel space too. So, I'm just looking for a motion and a second to accept the donations as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation there, prevent it.
Second.
Yeah, we're on to the second, during the discussion. And all in favor say aye. Aye. All at the same time, motions carried. We are on to personnel action.
We have two personnel actions, so would like to thank Mrs. Alyssa Raghazi for four years of service. Again, primary school, she gets excited to step aside to stay home. And to replace, you'll see her letter of resignation in her place, Mrs. Raghazi. We are recommending Nicole Borach, replace and slide into that teacher's role, we'd see a contract there. Big goal comes to us as three years of experience in Swallow School, was actually working with us as, had started as a special education, in the building sub and then through intervention role, and has worked primarily in that 4K and 5K world. So we're real excited to bring her expertise into that first grade classroom. We have had, we have a level release with the transition to overlap with Mrs. Borach and Mrs. Raghazi to make sure that transition continues to go. Thank you to Becca and Abby for assisting with that too. So, I'm just looking for two motions, one to approve Alyssa Raghazi's letter of resignation, and the second to approve Nicole Borach's individual teacher contract as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve Alyssa Raghazi's letter of resignation, and a motion to approve the individual teacher contract of Nicole Borach. I'll second.
Lily made the second. During discussion. And all in favor say aye. All at the same time, motions carried, and that both the resignation and the new contract. We're on the information.
Okay, so as we, just to kind of touch base on a couple of things before we talk a little bit more about assessment a little bit briefly. We are past our halfway point, we're on day rate row 9596, so you know, we are in that midst of that mid-year assessments and data collection too. So F and P assessments, and there will be math assessment assessing coming up here too as well, in the next weeks or so. Summer school planning is going, is started, we started the recruitment. We are planning a whole pledge face-to-face program moving forward. We are not sure if the state of Wisconsin is going to accept kindergarten through eighth grade virtual summer school minutes. We continue to wait for that direction from the state of Wisconsin. If they do, we are ready to launch what we offered last year for our virtual students. So it's already made, it's all ready to go, whether it be the area of math enrichment, literacy enrichment, and or some of the classes that we offered last year too. So, but as of right now, we have done planning face-to-face summer school moving forward. Had we, we swallowed that business last week as well about continuing to plan and continue and see what we can continue to add those course offerings, in a lot of different areas to see how much we can, again, summer school is not only great for kids, it is part of our school funding formula. So, we do want to offer a very robust summer school program, because that just brings in more on our, on our student calculations and student engagement like that too as well. Obviously, the big hot topic with schools right now is COVID, is vaccinations. So, we are in continual conversation with not only Waukesha County, but we're in continual conversation now with the Urban Fire Department as well, as it seems like the fire departments are kind of getting established as vaccination sites. And we do know that the state, I do believe authorized the group 1B, which did include educators. So, we have pulled our staff to see who is interested in the vaccine, and we will begin working down that list in accordance to a lot of recommendations from our attorneys, as we determine who, you know, when all of a sudden we may get a phone call and say, I've got five vaccines. Who can come over, who's on the list, and away we go. So, we're still in, in, in working with the county. Again, I'll have another phone call to county on Wednesday, and hopefully some plans have been made. But again, please know that we are in close contact with not only the county, but our local fire department, and they're working hard too to make, to get those vaccination sites going as well too. So, but our COVID numbers continue to be, to be what I would see to be very positive. All across Waukesha County, they are seeing significant decline in both COVID numbers and students as well as staff. Our, you know, we have obviously quarantine numbers from direct contacts, that's going to continue to happen. But our staff is, we're doing really, really well from the staffing side. It's as of last week, we had zero, literally zero quarantine and isolations on our staff too. So, yeah, just a big thank you to our staff and our families and our, 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 our soil staff who continue to do a really good job of mitigation stuff too as well. So that's been great. You know, as it relates to achievement, this year is a, is kind of a year that we're, we're not quite sure a lot. I mean, some things we can take a look at from a state assessment standpoint. We know last year we were, the federal reverence, we did not have to administer the state assessment or the Wisconsin Forward exam. Right now, we are planning on, so we don't have that gap, so we don't know what the learning loss will be from a state assessment standpoint. We're not sure if we're going to be issuing the Wisconsin Forward exam come this spring either. We are preparing for it, as we all know, we have a new administration who, again, may or may not mandate it as part of the, that's federal law, ESSA, to mandate that type of progress monitoring, because the issue is, is how do you administer that assessment to virtual kids? Because they have to be on campus with secure servers and things like that too. So, so where to come on that, how do you measure progress from a state assessment standpoint? Next month, we are going to be bringing in, we've got Abby, Mary, and Katie, Abby Quundy, Mary Iwansky, and Katie Bulick. And we can kind of highlight some of those, those student achievement trends that we are seeing. Right now, we do have a small population of kids who are virtual, and maybe different than in other school districts. But we, we probably won't separate publicly virtual kids versus non-virtual kids. So we're not going to do that, we will bring them all into a whole and, and take a look at that too. And those are things that we can take a look at, say, hey, how was our math growth? Is probably our biggest assessment that we have. You know, the, the other assessments that we look at is, is our day-to-day assessments, our formative assessment stuff that, again, our teachers continue to administer and hopefully remediate, move forward with that too. So, hopefully next month, we can, we can impress some of that and showcase some of that, that growth, or a little difference between February of a year ago compared to, you know, February of 2021. So we can see what we can do, kind of highlight, try to highlight that, because it wasn't the Journal Sentinel. You know, they talked about engagement, talked about attendance online, and stuff like that too, so it's been more of a public thing right now.
Well, we did math tests in last January.
Last January, February, yeah, correct, yeah. So you'll be able to see from a fall to a, a spring growth target. We don't have the, I'm sorry, fall to winter, we don't have that spring, because we did not have assessment last, last spring as well too. But we can see how our growth did from January, from the fall to the spring compared to the last several years too. We didn't have that long to data as well. So where to come on that as we continue to collect that information too, so.
Okay, so we're on the committee report, we have the student queue.
Okay, from a student achievement standpoint, this past month, we met on, to that, we met on January 11th. And actually, this time, we brought in five teachers as well to help join us. What we did during this past student achievement is we took a look at three different programs that we could possibly be considered to break to our staff to talk about global awareness and continue to expand our, our knowledge and our learning around that topic. The three programs that we looked at was ICS, we looked at Leader Vision, as well as the Equity Literacy Institute as well too. So, like all committee meetings and all meetings, we ran out of time. And we are looking forward, we did set another meeting a little bit earlier today, for February 8th, to continue that conversation. But we do have 17 members of our team, 16 or 17 of a very diverse teachers, administrators, school board members, specialists, support staff, who are assisting with that. Again, the goal is to continue to educate our staff to be more globally aware, and then ultimately, the big picture is to filter that down into our kids as well too, but we are starting with our staff. So we'll continue to update, we have another meeting in February 8th, and that will update the board and the community every February.
Is there one on the finance committee?
The finance committee met last Wednesday, January 8th on that, and we discussed the July through December budget update with revenues and expenses. Food service update, we went over the January membership count, the budget calendar for 2021 through 2022, and the CPI update. So, if I may ask, can you give me a little more detail about the sources on the revenue side and the opticals on the expense side? Let's see, the highlights are that our revenue question, this year is down compared to last year, but a lot of, not a lot, but some of that is running expenses that would have washed each other out of cooperatives, laser equipment, which for just simple families can field trips. Field trips already, obviously, aren't happening this year, so that's causing fluctuations on both the revenue and expense side. Our heating pump, on the track and vehicle, these are also reduced since lunch is free this year, and we're not doing field trips, so there's not as many fees to be paid for this year. And rentals are down as well, just because those funds typically come from facility use, which facility rental of the buildings is down this year because of COVID as well. On the expense side, we have decreased salaries from last year, but again, I do, with that, are some costs and the speech of which services that we contracted this summer, everybody coming over here, those are contracted services. So we're not, from our general purpose, those are salaries, we're not for that service, but they're not included in the district salary budget. So salaries are down, but you don't want to be missing the money, I don't want to see the cost with the contracted services. So the electric expense is down by about $26,000 year-over-year, so that's, that's all things to the score. And our 411 general supply does show a $30,000 increase year-over-year, and part of that is COVID cost, COVID supplies. We also did purchase in spring and early summer some of our COVID supplies. So overall, between 2020 budget and this budget, we spent about $57,000 on COVID supplies alone. Moving on to food service, our food service is kind of our right side this year, continues to be very profitable. That's due to the free meal security offered. Our food sold by this year through December are just over $8,000, $9,000. To give you some comparison, last year, September through December, we had about $4,000. So that's a typical year, so that's giving us a revenue addition of $75,000 this year so far. So that will hopefully lead to be profitable for us. The January membership count was conducted on the second Friday in June morning as stated by the CPI. Our building count is 824 students, with 445 students at our primary, and 479 at the end of the year. So this brings to a total building count of 832 students in September. So, this year, some of our students are opening hole out to virtual programs, because that's just a better fit for them this year for the monitor. But I'm really hoping that next year, these will be those students that are into our programs. And then I attached the budget calendar that I developed, so for next fiscal year for 2021 through 2022. We're at the point of the year where we're starting to look at curbing needs and staffing needs. And we've already started those conversations a little bit at the admin level, but we're continuing to kind of see what that looks like for next year. And this year also is a diagonal budget year, so we're leaving for the governor's budget for 2021 through 2024. That'll be finalized probably in July. So we're facing a couple unknown factors at this point, but in development, and I'm just going to kind of make it around who's that's called, my CPI and the school administration's allowance, and we'll take that as it comes. And then the last thing we talked about was the CPI. We did receive finalized CPI data for 2021 through 2022, the final rate is 1.23%, so that's all will be used for salary department purposes in the 2021 through 2022 this year. Any questions?
So from a budget standpoint, things continue to kind of come in clear. We just got word that our insurance costs, we're going to find out exactly what those are going to be coming up in the next week or two as well. Actually, next week, we hope to get those, and then we'll, we'll get a, get a fill in the stuff that we can control, or the, the, the state, we need to handle, you know, the upcoming budget, so, thank you, April.
April, thanks for this, this is really helpful, how was the, oh, great job.
Okay, we are on to.
So here, just before trying to the members that are not here on the board, that's a gesture, we appreciate that. That was sign of the principle, and of the primary, Jake Bonden.
I'm great.
And he's in his physical show, rolling out, going through, you know, that. Those are district priorities and goals, and I think you could.
Yes, so I'm going to talk primarily about the student side of SCL, which has been a district-wide focus for both buildings. The quote that we chose to start with, you can see above the board, really kind of summarizes the work we focused on, in particular for our professional development over the past week. We had a, on Monday, Thursday, so we'll see the next one. So I'll highlight, one of the activities that we did in both buildings was, we kind of were trying to figure out, how can we assess how our social emotional learning or social emotional growth is going for students? And a way we came up to assess that at a very formative level was to have every child's name hung up in our building, and for all staff members, administrators, teachers, support staff, everyone who works within our building, to go to each roster, kid by kid, and put a check mark if they have a strong connection with that child. Our outcome was trying to determine how many kids in our building have a strong connection with at least one adult, and how many are we missing, who's falling through the cracks, who do we need to make sure that gets a connection with someone? When I say strong connection, I don't just mean that you know, they can say hi even in the hallway. We're talking about would come to you if they had a problem, you know about them as a person beyond just being a student. They know about you, you have a kind of a deeper connection. So at each grade level, we have kind of identified students who we are missing in a sense. And I use that word lightly, sounds worse than it is, but also it feels heavier than it maybe would seem if we didn't do this activity. So, our plan at the primary and intermediate school is to now, our SCL teams have gone back, taking that data, and it's going to lay out a plan. Who is going to be making it their priority to connect with that child? Who are we going to kind of assign as that child's role mentor, that mentor, until we can secure a connection for everyone? So that was kind of our main goal through our time together for our student SCL. Some future planning looking ahead specific to the primary school is looking into kind of rolling out what would be called kind of a tribes model. And what that would look like is that, instead of having just a community within your own classroom, we would build cohorts of communities across the whole school. So every single staff member within our building would have a tribe, teachers, administrators, students, support staff. Everyone will have a tribe, and the kids in the tribe will range from 4K through 4th grade in our building. When 4th graders move onto the intermediate school, they're then replaced with new incoming 4K students and 5K students who are new to the building. The goal being that we can build a community that is longstanding throughout a child's entire time at the school. So, instead of having one teacher for kindergarten and moving on, they'll have one adult, hopefully, if that adult stays in the building or the child stays in the building, for a five-year period, and then also having that cohort of students. That's kind of the most important part, is that they'll have a cohort of kids from a range of grades that they'll travel with through their time as they grow, as they start, they'll be mentored by our kids who are in 4th grade, and then slowly grow into that role of mentoring our younger kids as they enter, kind of live up to their depth, as we see that. As we talked about before, another big focus for us has been integrating our SCL curriculum, which is second step. And a big way that that's been happening is that we're meeting, at the primary school, it's daily, and at the intermediate school, I believe it's weekly formally, and then with intermittent time as permitted. One of the components that we have been focusing on, in particular at the primary building, is we're beyond integrating kind of a morning message. And a morning message, I have a sample for you, and don't judge me because it's my own. And a morning message is more than just a, hey, welcome to school, have a great day kind of message, it really has a purpose. And there are a lot of components that are present, in particular, at the primary level. So, one of the things that the very younger grades that you'll see is that the date is identified, right? That's a skill that we're working in the younger grades, and they get a little older, you know, it's hard to put, you know, January 20th, like just for Friday. And the components that we look for is kind of some sort of a welcoming message where the kids are coming back together, a task for the kids to get done during the morning, and some way to connect their task to the learning that might come throughout the day. So you'll notice kind of towards the end of my, that, or the end of mine, there's a math problem in red. Math for me is a subject that comes in the afternoon. So my goal is to kind of get kids thinking about, okay, we're not going to do math for a couple hours, how can I activate that knowledge? Do you think about what we did yesterday to bring that back? And it gives us something then during morning meeting that we work for together, it's a way to problem solve together as a community, right, when you get started. Anytime there would be a change in the schedule, that will be in there. So you can see that on that Friday, we have math testing, so all the changes that will be coming. Having students be able to see what's coming is one of the key things to help them foster that independence and kind of plan their own day, to know what's coming and build that routine, and especially to know, hey, my routine's going to change, I can foreshadow what that's going to look like so that it will be a little bit easier for me. It looks relatively similar across grade levels, which is obviously a little wordier, the 4th grade, yeah, because I like to talk. So that would look, but it would look relatively, relatively similar across all the grade levels, with some sort of welcome, something for the kids to do, and some foreshadowing throughout the day. In your morning meeting time, you would almost always see the teacher having the morning message worked into that meeting. It's not just this was up when they come, they really didn't get it done, you always come back to it throughout the day, whether it's during morning meeting right away, or throughout the day as you go. And then one of the activity, or one of the things that we're looking to grow on, had areas that identify for our own growth, is how are we communicating what we're doing during this time with families? We have homings that go along with the curriculum, and those are being sent home, but how can we really engage our families to truly build a community as a virgin, and not just within our classrooms, really engaging the whole child, the whole team that's working together to promote growth for each child in our district?
So this is just a, at the primary level, just a recap of Jan, January, and it's also there we are still. We are definitely chosen to be a Murkin Mustang, I definitely feel like that, so we're in that time. These are just some highlights, I just did it in picture format here, I'm going to go closer to our. So we can see here that we got our spelling bee, we have our three, top three, we have Abby Kate and Conrad, who are our top three in the spelling bee. We had a whole group of kids, and with this high mom, this net, and this beautiful, this leadership, be able to participate in that, and I just shout out to all that. But the kids were very courageous, I got to tell you, when they're spelling. I gotta tell you, when they're spelling, you're just, I'm not even making eye contact because I'm hoping the whole time we did it. And so it was really a great event that we had at both buildings at the school as well. Um, something else that we are definitely we're doing over in January is welcome back and resetting with expectations, especially with all the bags and extra things that have to be carried in with students. Drop off is really quick in the morning. I'm very impressed with families, especially when kids are carrying backpack, mask, water bottle, you know, they're everything. There's just so much to carry and to be um tuned to. The other highlight too is that our lost and found is at the least that it has been. And so knowing kids are are actually responsible for their items, we moved it by the cafeteria, so people are taking some things on that. And then just one thing that was a fun community activity that we did, we get some caroling around to kick off winter break. And every so often, the the team, whether it's a B L T or a group of teachers or staff members, we get together and we get to do some silly fun things. I know we're having already a plan to kick off the one hundred days, which happens February eleventh. So I know that we already have an activity kind of planned to continue to build community. We've been a great. For your focus, some of these things are just gonna be highlights you heard about. We are definitely in the window, we do have the primary comes to a close for um F and P games and map this Friday. So we've been doing those types of assessments to get, and I know Andrew's wanting to, you had a question about that. We'll have more data to look deeper into that games is new and I know next week or next month, now we can talk more to the why to why this switch off. We also are looking and we have scheduled our times, knowing that it's not set for forward, so making sure if it does come, we're prepared and that we have the support needed. That's really important. As a building, um, also know that we're really looking at our building schedule. That's gonna be a highlight prior to this meeting, I have that building leadership team. We asked the first and foremost question is what do our students need? What are the most they must have? And that's a little different off the type than what I need as a staff member. And when those two things come into conflict, students went up, should went up. And so really being able to see that, last year, we did a lot of work on the schedule and this year, when we went through the tonight, I guess, to see what did we accomplish all the things we wanted to, there were very few things that weren't in that schedule, which is a nice thing to have. And what do we ask about our staff priorities? And then going forward, what's was the game changer for you this year? And then also coming back to what is your one wish for change? Right, we can't make everything work in a schedule, but to the most, it's the best we can do. That's kind of where we're sitting with building schedules. That time of year, we talk about staffing, we talk about building schedules. Then over an instruction and curriculum, I'll just leave these as high leverage, just so you have to see the hindsight of what's gonna be happening next month. We're having data coverage conversation with individuals and teams. That's one of the big things. How do we take data and look at it as a pool? But then as what's this whole group or cohort of students? What are we seeing they need? What is, what are they doing well? And then also as individuals, that comes with whether it's coaching with um Miss Kavadi, Kavadi, others, myself, that all happens. Preferring strategy groups, pushing towards that two times a week minimum, that's gotta be a guarantee. Right now, most of our staff are at about a once a week meeting during that um work time. We wanna see two to three. That's where we see that really role have that role happening. And we don't wanna meet with kids every single day, for example. You have to have some line of love, some support themselves to do it on their own. Putting an adult on top of this child does not help. So pushing toward independence. And you can see the other thing we're trying to work on and one of the biggest things is coaching into the writer, not the writing, and coaching into the reader, not the reading. So often times, kids will talk to us about like when you say to them, tell me what you're doing as a writer. They won't tell you what they're writing about. And that's content. What we really want them to do is tell us what strategies, what are they doing as a writer? What's their craft move? So helping adults have the tools for kids to be able to access what they're doing as a writer. Whether that's checklist, it could be um charts that they're using. It's a big thing as a shift, get students to recognize what they're doing as their own meta cognition. And then math structure is in curriculum, it's something that we are looking at, like what's happening in our math curriculum? How can we support that to be more of a workshop when it feels like we're going whole group? That's one of the areas. And then literacy, we're unpacking the units during the on the lots of what is this unit really, what are we trying to achieve? And then we thin slice, that's where we look at data and we decide what needs to happen between the students. Like what does this student need compared and putting it against pretty students like writing, for example, against a um example piece? That's what thin slicing helps to do. And then we have comprehensible input output. And what that really means is how do we need students get that that spot where they are going to end up one level up to what they already know, that sweet spot we call it. And that's one of the terms in um, it's possible input output is what is I'm doing as the input modeling that? And then looking, what is the student going to do? That's really what they're trying to plan for and that's really the dumbest structural model, whether it's in furring or large. One of the things that came up is I want to just highlight is our January eighteenth P D. And that is really Laura Howard, our E L consultant here for our district. She led part of that time and really was this understanding and optimism. It's something around the lines of thinking maps. Thinking maps is carbon coincides, something called that is the best practices. And sometimes when you look at it, people will think that it has to do with, oh, this is a graphic format, it's not that. Thinking maps are deliberately made to just direct model our thinking process. It's an input output piece. It's consistent what you're going to be depending on the process you're modeling to think. So that's something that's usually really difficult to think about. How am I gonna model my process of thinking is very different than what's the activity you're doing? So sometimes we fill out graphic organizers to complete an activity, but modeling a thinking process. And then it's consistent across all content areas as well. The handout that I have and those of you that um are virtual, you'll see it on the next slide as well. It's really this understanding of, so for example, the circle map, that would be a map that you always use that process whenever you are going to try to brainstorm or define something in context. That's the map you pull up each and every time. The bubble map is all about describing and you can see these have a, there's a research behind why you use these when you use them. Compare and contrast, we talked about how the Venn diagram is oftentimes used. I would probably tell you Venn diagram was actually created to prove a mathematical equation, nothing to do with comparing. However, we have tweaked that and it doesn't really align. So really having a double bubble map is something that uses, that people, people who are really in depth and continuous improvement, use thinking maps a lot. That's something that we use. We know that this is best practice for each and every. And then the number one barrier to comprehension really is being able to understand the text features and the construction of text. If we can target that, which that's what these thinking maps do. Our students, whether they're E L, and that's the biggest part of Laura's presentation, because every student is a language learner. You don't intend to have E L services. And that's one of the things that I heard from the staff as a positive too, that they really understood that, oh, if I have a student that has a E L need or that we identify as an English language learner, the great tools that we use with them also is something that we can use with others. These are on that other slide, the base on the gate cabinet scale. These are the ones that you see on the sheet. You know, it goes all the way down to more complex, this would be a pod and a pad, all the way down. And the way you up the rigor is you overlap those. You make their classifying and then also you're gonna compare and contrast. That's the rigor that ups in the using actual. Here is our professional learning, see our second grade team, Melissa Crowman, there is eating what happened if people went and learned about each of these maps and how they could use them. And now apply them immediately to what they were teaching as an example. And they are demonstrating and um teaching others that way. The same with third grade here, um, Lindsay Blumberg, they're speaking, and Martika around the other type of maps, you can see that. And the whole group having some more time alone to see like what can we take immediately and turn it off. Number fifteen, again, our comprehensive input output, the desire model and literacy, that's gonna be kind of our whole group learning. That's her, we're going next. Thank you.
So when you guys hired Rebecca, you may be better. Because, I mean, honestly, listen to her talk about what she knows about our kids. I'm not gonna be as smart sounding as she was, but I'll do my best here. Here's what we've been doing and I have to thank Katie Bullock in particular for this first slide. We're not using map testing anymore. We're doing aspire A C T because it correlates with what they're gonna have if we have the high school level. Um, we have it from fifth grade through eighth grade. First year that we've done, we did seventh, eighth grade last year. This year is the first time for fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. So what Katie has done was with language arts is take a look at what we're doing really well in our classrooms. Celebrating those things with the teachers. So she and I meet with all those teachers individually. That's the other thing that we have uh that's different from the primary school. We've got one language arts teacher in fifth grade. So Katie can really focus on that one language arts teacher with me. And I find out what is it we're supposed to be doing to be a little bit better. So we 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 know we're doing well, we're trying to find gaps and how are we gonna, are we gonna meet those, you know, fill those gaps in? So Katie takes a whole, everything that came out of all the standards and we went with each teacher and said, where are you doing this? Then we weren't doing it somewhere or didn't reckon that we're doing somewhere, then we found a place for that to be done. He's also taking that same information and using it with our social studies teachers. So that we can abuse some of our language arts curriculum into social studies. I get to listen to read alouds in social studies. I get to watch kids write in social studies. I get to watch kids do nonfiction reading with our, with their social studies. Or also using uh Newsella or Newsy L A, depending on how you wanna pronounce that. To buy some really uh current nonfiction writing for our kids to read and then respond to. So a lot of work that Katie has done in our, in our language arts and social studies teachers are doing. We have one social studies teacher in each grade level, one language arts teacher in three levels, that works out pretty well there. Um, seventh grade social studies. Um, we have three teachers teaching seventh grade social studies. We have a math teacher teaching seventh grade social studies and science teacher teaching seventh grade social studies and a language arts teacher teaching seventh grade social studies this year. So there's a lot of infusion of language arts. So um Melissa Sebo and Michelle Scardino and Megan Hess are really doing a fabulous job with social studies. And Katie is leading that and putting together some incredible lessons with that. And it's, it doesn't matter the teacher that you have, you're getting the same information, the same delivery. And then uh Mary is now working with Ben Pizza in sixth grade, Melissa and Dave on science. So science was another aspect of the aspire test, so we're taking a look at those things. What we found with the aspire test with science, it wasn't the knowledge, the content knowledge is not the issue. The problem is our kids were seeing a graph or having an article of brand new information they were supposed to read and then decipher. So it's almost more like a language arts sort of situation. So we're working on putting together uh sample test questions that our kids will be able to use. Starting in February, they're gonna get one a week. So they're gonna have practice into what it looks like to answer aspire science questions. Cause it's not like just, you know, we're gonna do something on meteorology and all of a sudden we're gonna have a test that follows that. These are all different. So those activities uh Mary is creating with with those three, I get to join those meetings as well. Um, on our B D day, our teachers really need to get together to talk to one another. Uh, content wise, from uh from fifth grade through eighth grade, they had some team time. We did the activity that uh that A J mentioned. So if you imagine out in the comments area, and I didn't take pictures, I wasn't smart enough to do that. But here they're all the pictures, the kids are sitting down in the comments and our teachers. I couldn't take pictures because it was so personal as they're going through figuring out who they've made connections with. So if you can imagine, if you're a fifth grade teacher, you've got kids on that whole wall. So I watched a fifth grade team as a group go all the way down the wall, try and find connections. The one question that got there was, will that child come to me if they have a problem? All of the other questions we asked and they felt really good about, but when you get to that one, it's that next level sort of thing. What I will tell you is, I think that sometimes we sell ourselves short on the connections that we make with our kids. We don't realize the connection that we've made until it's after the fact. So when you think back about some of the kids that we've had here, A J, if you had come over and seen those kids, you've got a, you've got a connection with kids there too. It's, it was a powerful thing. So then later in the afternoon, we sat down, I brought all those things together and gave them to each one of the grade levels. I said, okay, this is not to point out here what we're not doing well. Who are we really connected with and who are the kids that we need to connect with? So as we move forward with our grade level meetings, that's what our focus is gonna be. Um, the staff S C L this uh this month is focused on the bright spots. So um remember illusions, is that the, is that the right word? Okay, so Jackie Putty has these jars in our teacher's lounge here over at the primary school. So on the, on a little piece of paper that says, I am proud of. So that as our, our teachers can actually write out what they're proud of, put it in the jar. And at some point in time, we'll pull them out and start reading those. Those can be pretty powerful. Um, we are also working on a new schedule. Um, we have parameters that are put in place. Those same things that Becca says she's having conversations with about with the primary staff, we're doing the same thing here. We have schedule ideas, we're gonna come together. Ron knows, Ron knows the the whole process that I'm trying to go through and to be honest with you. When we had our first meeting, people left uncomfortable because I didn't just say, here's the schedule idea I have. Now tear it apart and tell me how really good it is or really bad it is. Was one of those things that are most beneficial for our kids first and foremost? And then I said, what's one wish you could have in the schedule? So then they communicated those with me and we have tried to put together a schedule that's going to involve all of that. As well as include as much of our new space in the schedule from the beginning of the day to the end of the day as possible. So I'll be having another uh meeting with our staff on Thursday. For those interested, want to come and talk about the schedule on Thursday after school. I'm gonna quickly go through some of these things. Um, our F I A teachers, I mean, they're outside all day, every day, doing incredible things with our kids over here. Uh, Matt had a room ball unit for the seventh and eighth graders. Um, Mr. Dusso made up some brand new, uh, I don't know what the game was called, but it was, it was baseball and tennis and kickball all in one. It was incredible watching the kids out there participating. Right now, our, our fifth and sixth graders doing a roller skating unit. Matt broke out the cross country speed today for the eighth graders tomorrow, leaving the seventh graders. And he's created cross country speed trails uh on our property. Science and uh Spanish, we can't really see the Spanish vocabulary, but there's white words that this government has the kids. She'll say something, the kids either write in Spanish or English, whichever happened to be. And then they share it. Our fifth graders created their own uh periodic table. So each student was, was allowed to choose their element and then they wrote about it, which you really can't see very well there. Thank goodness, Dr. Russ and uh and Mr. Hannah had allowed us to have interval basketball for our kids. So Tuesdays, Thursdays and Friday mornings, we have interval basketball. We've had twenty kids for seventh, eighth grade boys most mornings, about fifteen or sixteen with fifth and sixth grade boys. And we have uh ten uh fifth, eighth grade girls on Friday. So just having that opportunity, they're masked up the whole time, once again, that picture's pretty far away. Our spelling bee, it was, it was great. Mrs. Hayman did a great job with that. Uh, science therapy toys, that's sixth grade. So our kids are working on developing different toys for uh to meet the needs of students with cerebral palsy. So they got to share all of those um this, this last week. The creative ideas these kids have are just amazing and then explaining everything and making their, their advertisements. Our student center is doing a winter clothing drive. I know you guys are gonna have the Super Bowl, sorry to bring that up, but they're gonna have the Super Bowl in the primary school. We're doing a winter clothing drive that our fifth grade student senate has done. You can't really see there about Mr. Fleischman that's referring with a student reading. Um, Becca talked about the importance of that and just watching our, you're just watching and listening to the conversations our teachers have with our kids, great. And I had to end with this one. I think sometimes we, we take some of this uh for granted, but our, our kids are doing an amazing job. I've talked to my, talked to many friends who have kids that are principals, they're not in school. They're worried about when they do come back to school, will the kids be able to wear masks? Will they be able to stay six feet apart? Our kids are doing that. Our teachers, can't say enough about them, our assistants, our secretaries, our custodial staff is beyond prepared. They're, they're, they're doing incredible things and to our families who continue to support us. We would just like to thank you um for working together with us to make sure that we can stay face to face with our kids. So that's all I got. Thank you. Thank you.
The only other piece is, is we are gonna be starting M S A C volleyball too. So yeah, that's uh, and we get more finalization will come up with that, but that's another big step for our, our community as well. Thanks, Jay, thanks, Rebecca, thanks, A J.
Sure, every year, the the D P I requires each school district in the state of Wisconsin to declare their open enrollment seats for the following year. Um, this does cause a district to really take a look at numbers, take a look at budget, take a look at all sorts of factors um moving forward. I am very excited to uh say that uh in years.
I am very excited to, uh, say that, uh, in years past, we typically do have limited, but every once in a while we'll have one or two grade levels, that'll be a slotted number. Um, this year, our administrative team is recommending that we do a limited throughout the district. Um, for, for students in, in regular education, unfortunately, um, students with IEPs, uh, given the, uh, the nature of special education. We are going to be, we're looking to meet the, the special education needs of district residents. Um, outside of speech, um, speech, we, we feel we have room to absorb, um, into our special education program. Um, one of the, uh, key aspects of having unlimited seats is, is if in fact you do get a child who wants to move in or a family who wants to move in from the open enrollment into the district throughout the this school year, say it's October, November, December, or whatever month it is, if you set a cap and that cap gets breached, um, we have to turn families away. For state statute, this year that did happen, um, at the intermediate school, we had to turn some families back in eighth grade. Um, given that our open enrollment seats were filled and, uh, we had to turn folks away. Again, in years past, we had space restrictions, uh, this year when we take a look at the, uh, our current enrollment. And, uh, what it is, is us on the horizon, we feel very strongly that, uh, unlimited in, uh, fourth, fifth, eighth grade is, is appropriate for our district. And then within our, our boundaries above the class sizes. So, um, the administration is looking for the board to approve, uh, the 2021, 22 open enrollment seat allocations as follows. And, uh, in the motion please, if you could read off specifically as that is what DPI will.
I'm going to motion to approve the 2021, 22 open enrollment seat allocations. For 4K unlimited, 5K unlimited, first grade unlimited, second unlimited, third unlimited, fourth unlimited, fifth unlimited, sixth unlimited, seventh unlimited, eighth unlimited. Cross categorical special education zero, speech only across the district unlimited.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second and a three discussion. Now, here any of our voters say aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motions carried. Okay, the next item is the intermediate gym floor refishing, we've got these bids.
Yep, uh, we, we got, uh, we have four bids for people responding to our RFP. And, uh, we are pleased to, uh, say we did have a budgeted item for this school year of $20,000. And, uh, the, the low bid and the very competitive bid and with very good, um, references, all of these people are outstanding. Uh, but the administration is recommending that the board approve, I make a motion to approve Schmidt for it, as they were the low bid. Uh, to receive the contract to refinish the floors. This would occur in August as, uh, it was the recommendation from every floor company to wait because we had an issued budget. But given the, the nature of remodel and that the gymnasium was probably going to be a storage area and a staging area for equipment, materials, whatever it might be, they said, if you don't like doing your floor twice, I do in your office. So, um, the, the great thing is, is if we can get a motion, is we can get on their schedule for August, because obviously this is a very, very busy time for, uh, gym floor resurfaces and things like that too as well.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the floor contracts by Schmidt for it and for such.
Do we have motion and second, need discussion? Well, a favor then say aye? All right, hold the same sign, motion's carried. We have, uh, Chrome group purchases the 2022, 2024.
Believe it or not, we are again, looking forward to, uh, purchasing and, and just like we found out last year where I think our fifth grade Chrome group's coming right around October gym.
Yep, end of October.
End of October and we ordered them pretty early, uh, March, in the March, and so we'd like to get a jumpstart on that too. And we've, uh, we've sent out proposals for five vendors, we did get two, uh, returns for, for the RFP. And, uh, so we are looking for that half of it would go towards our incoming fifth graders and also just students who come into the district for our East of Home program for Chrome book. And then, uh, the other half would go to second grade to support our one-on-one initiative. Those are, you know, right around seven years old, minus seven years old, and, uh, they have reached the end of life approval, so we just, uh, need to look at replacing them too. So, um, the good news is like I mentioned in the package is that we have enough management council license, so we don't need to, to purchase those. And, uh, the insurance cost is something that is just, uh, if a parent chooses to purchase that, again, that would be their prepared option or the family option to purchase that insurance. So the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the purchase of 160 Chrome books for the TRA quote, not to exceed $37,760. As TRA was the loan there.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of 160 Chrome books for the TRA quote, not to exceed $37,760.
I'll second.
Do the motion a second, need discussion? Do all the voters say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we've got future meetings and agenda items, next. You really want to have another closed session on the, what, schedule that now?
By the clock again on the 22nd?
22nd of this.
Of February. February, if you want to go earlier than that.
Okay.
And you're going to be, I can pull the board if we want to go early, I can find a different time too, next week or two.
Okay, I just thought you had set something up. You sure?
We can, I, that was, I, I think we could bring the board together for another hour meeting prior to the 22nd, that'd be great, about two weeks, if that, that works with everybody. And again, I'll hold the board and get a, get a closed session and then we'll post it for you.
Okay, then, uh, any agenda, the board members would like to see on, on February evening, March meeting? Okay, there's no problem with future meetings, uh, and a motion is adjourned.
How many of us are adjourned?
Yeah.
Come back in.
Motion, I heard Lindsay, so all the voters say aye?
Aye.
All right, hold the same sign, meeting is adjourned.